I was meeting to discuss the appointment of personnel and employee disciplinary matter pursuant to the personnel exemption at section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom
Second.
It's been moved in second and all those in favor, please say aye.
of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are in closed session.
requires certification by the School Board that such meeting, such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, oh, Madam Clerk, can you pull the board? Excuse me.
Ayers.
Agree.
Egan.
Agreed.
Hazard.
Agree.
Healy.
Here. Agree.
Mr. Hironz.
Agreed.
Skidby.
Agree.
Mr. McCasker.
Agree.
Your motion passed unanimously.
All right, do we have any, a motion from closed session? I believe Mr. Hironz wanted to start.
Okay, a motion for, I make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for appointment to Falmouth Elementary School.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Benson, can you make our announcement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Penny Rowley is the School Board's appointment this evening as Assistant Principal for Falmouth Elementary School. Since 2014, Ms. Rowley served as an elementary assistant principal with Prince William County Schools. She has had a variety of leadership responsibilities, including special education designee. She assists in planning and implementing building in-service programs, grade level meetings, and faculty meetings in addition to her experience as an administrator. She was a classroom teacher, Title I reading and math resource teacher, and a gifted resource teacher. Ms. Rowley has a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration and a Master of Science in Elementary Education from Mary Washington College. She earned a graduate certificate in gifted education and a graduate certificate in administration and supervision, both from the University of Mary Washington. Congratulations.
Is she here? Can you stand up, please?
Ms. Rowley, welcome. Go Indians, I hear. I hear you're with Neapsville Elementary School. I was a Neapsville class of, oh, 1980-ish. So you're in good hands. I look forward to working with you.
Congratulations and welcome aboard. Do I have a second motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that we accept Dr. Benson's recommendation for appointment of Assistant Principal at HH Pool Middle School. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are pleased to announce Ms. Amy Limerick is the new Assistant Principal at HH Pool Middle School. Ms. Limerick began her career with Stafford in 2007 at Dixon Smith Middle School as a sixth-grade teacher. She's taught math, history, and reading, currently serving as sixth-grade faculty representative on the Bully Prevention Committee. She serves as the English Department Chair and is a member of the Leadership Committee and works in support of her colleague and mentor program. She is currently an eighth-grade Inclusion and Honors English teacher. Ms. Limerick earned her Associate's Degree from Germanic Community College, attended the University of Mary Washington where she earned a Bachelor of Liberal Studies and Sociology and a Master of Education in Educational Leadership graduations. I'll get you to stand up, too.
Can you stand up? Well, welcome to your new position. All right, do we have a third motion?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we not accept the superintendent's recommended disciplinary action and take no action with respect to employee A.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are pleased to announce Ms. Amy Limerick is the new Assistant Principal at HH Pool Middle School. Ms. Limerick began her career with Stafford in 2007 at Dixon Smith Middle School as a sixth-grade teacher. She's taught math, history, and reading, currently serving as sixth-grade faculty representative on the Bully Prevention Committee. She serves as the English Department Chair and is a member of the Leadership Committee and works in support of her colleague and mentor program. She is currently an eighth-grade Inclusion and Honors English teacher. Ms. Limerick earned her Associate's Degree from Germanic Community College, attended the University of Mary Washington where she earned a Bachelor of Liberal Studies and Sociology and a Master of Education in Educational Leadership graduations. I'll get you to stand up, too.
Can you stand up? Well, welcome to your new position. All right, do we have a third motion?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we not accept the superintendent's recommended disciplinary action and take no action with respect to employee A.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, if the board and the audience will stand for our invocation, and then Ms. Egan, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I have an amendment.
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. McCasker.
Madam Chair, I amend the agenda. I move to amend the agenda as follows. Nine, I move to remove 9.01 board comments. I amend to move staff reports, section 1401, the Resource Utilization Study and 1402 to the September 13th meeting, 2016. I also amend the agenda for 1501 to read convene and close session legal matters and personnel matters, applicable codes to apply, and 1606 to be amended to read action from closed session personnel matter, applicable codes to apply.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, for discussion, any changes to that motion? I would ask that the staff reports, because we have our annual energy management program presentation, I believe we have our folks here, and I think that that's only fair to them, and the Resource Utilization Study update, I believe, is fairly brief. Is that correct, Dr. Benson? Can it be?
Correct. It's all in the item, so.
Okay. I would, I would ask that we keep those.
Madam Chairman, can we not read these reports? I mean, basically, the information, unless somebody has any questions, this is, this is all available to us. We're starting an hour late and we have other committee reports going and everything, and, and another closed session, and I think it'd be nice if we got out of here before midnight.
I, I would.
Do we have non-Stafford County Public Schools folks that are part of that resource, or not the resource, but the energy report? They're all.
Are they outside folks? I don't know. I thought that they were folks from, from the division. Okay.
They're all from the division and I don't have a problem with reading the report.
Yeah, no, I think it's important and I think it's.
It's always good information, great information.
Yeah.
Important information, but.
I think it's important and I think it, I'd love to hear it on, in September, and I think the public should hear it in September, just not tonight because of our packed schedule. And we also have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven more closed sessions items in addition to, we don't want to short the staff reports and, so.
Madam Chair, I did have a question about the Resource Utilization Study update. I'm just wondering if there are some items in there that are important for us to know as it pertains to strategic planning or any of the other issues that are going to be coming before the board in September, that we need this information explained to us in a presentation. I understand, Ms. Healy, where we can read it, but I don't know if we need additional explanation or to take action on any items that are coming in September.
Well, I don't have a problem with it coming in September. I'm just concerned about tonight. Of course, I'm wasting more time now, which I don't intend to do, but we're starting an hour late. We have two of our committees that are here, or one of our committees, and then we have the VML that's going to give a presentation. We have Citizen Comment. You know, there's, there's just a lot on here, and our staff would probably be here at least till nine o'clock, nine thirty, before we even get to that.
That's being generous.
So I think it's a courtesy to them to set this at the next agenda. And perhaps we could do it under special presentations or, or, you know, consider something like that, so they're not waiting another couple hours when we come here next month. You know, do this as well.
Again, my question was, is this, is there some information in the presentation itself that we need?
I, I believe that we need that. I believe in the Governance Committee regarding their utilization study, that was something we thought was important to hear in open session before we had our quarterly meeting, considering that that's kind of things going forward. This progress report is pretty critical, so I felt that it was best that we hear a brief overview of it tonight. But I'm fine with 1402.
I'm okay to amend, and we'll hear 1401, Madam Chair, as you suggest, if the board will have it, and, but 1402, we will move to September 13th.
And I'll accept that.
Okay, Madam.
But they are going to keep it short, well, when they finally get on, which will be a while from now.
I don't think, well, we'll see. How many questions people have?
So, Madam Chair, that is the amended, amended suggestion.
Right. As amended.
And the second was.
Second. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Was that a motion to adjourn?
Motion carries. All right. Moving along to a great part of the evening is our awards. Sorry. I believe that that, Madam Clerk, is it, I'm not sure who I'm supposed to recognize. Is it Mr. Lewis?
I think Mr. Lewis. Is Mr. Lewis, you're coming down?
Okay. All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis, it must be me. I have so much paper up here. I apologize. Can I recognize you for presentation of awards? Thank you. Thanks.
Why not?
Will Mr. Bobby Jett and Emily Creschow and Kevin Dreek join me? Six student competitors and four teachers from Stafford High School attended the 2016 Skills USA National Championships in Louisville, Kentucky in late June. Emily Creschow placed first in a field of 46 contestants in architectural drafting. Her project for the competition was to design and draft the floor and roof plans, exterior elevations, building section and opening schedules for a one-story 1,600-square-foot residence. In addition to the gold medal, she was awarded a new notebook computer, portable hard drive, industry software and texts, a construction calculator, a scholarship, and a 3D mouse. Kevin Dreek was 10th place out of 43 contestants in technical drafting. His project was to create the production detail and assembly drawings for the redesign of a grommet assembly tool using 3D CAD software. The team of Jennifer Sproul and Nick Hausend were the first-ever competitors from Virginia in a new competition, additive manufacturing, or 3D printing, in which they designed, 3D printed, and tested a small catapult. I would like to have seen that. They also met and discussed their competition with Nick Pinchuk, President and CEO of Snap-on Tools Incorporated. Raul Marloquin Sandoval represented Virginia in carpentry, building a wall section of a house with a Dutch hip roof. It's also noted that he is an ESL student, recent to the United States, and he performed well. Andrew Boring was Stafford's first-ever competitor in power equipment technology in which he troubleshoots and repairs small engine, small air-cooled engines. Instructors Mark Brunson, small engine repair, Angela Candela, cosmetology, Dan Harding, carpentry, and Mr. Jett, drafting CAD, accompanied their students to the conference. Also, Bobby Jett was presented with the Region Two Skills USA Advisor of the Year Award representing the 12 southeastern states. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for all that you do. Next, we will have our first special presentation from our CTE Advisory Committee. If you all would come forward.
I want to see that catapult. I want to use it at work. I have a really bad boss.
Next time demonstrations.
Catapult him out of the Pentagon.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Benson. I'm Dinah Robinson, Supervisor for Career and Technical Education, and with me I have Mrs. Dolores Martin, Chairperson of our CTE Advisory Committee. We are pleased to be able to provide you with an update on our CTE program as well as concerns and recommendations from the Advisory Committee. Career and technical education programs are designed to prepare students to both further their education and to enter the workforce upon graduation from high school. According to the Student Enrollment Demographic Report for 2015-16, over 10,000 students in Stafford County schools were enrolled in CT courses between grades six and 12. This number does not reflect those students that may have taken more than one course or those enrolled in economics and personal finance. As you know, economics and personal finance is a required course for students to graduate. As you can see, we have eight main program areas: agriculture, business, family and consumer sciences, health and medical sciences, marketing, technology, and trade and industrial education. We currently offer 118 different courses and support over 128 CT instructors. With our program areas, within our program areas, we provide opportunities for our students through service learning, cooperative education, the Boots Program, JROTC, CTE student organizations, as well as other student-run programs. We are also proud to support three governor STEM academies through our Stafford Academy for Technology in the areas of engineering, biomedical science, and information technology. We are very excited by the new strategic plan and the C5W All-Century Skills Initiative. Within our CTE classes, many opportunities exist to gain the skills of creativity, collaboration, communication, critical thinking, citizenship, and wellness. All of our CTE courses are categorized within 16 career clusters. The C5W skills are a fundamental part of each cluster. To highlight just a few areas, creativity is central in courses such as cosmetology, design multimedia, technical drawing, fashion marketing, and cabinet making, to name just a few. Collaboration is of utmost importance in the Boots Program. When electrical, masonry, carpentry, and drafting students all work together to design and build homes in our community. Communication skills play an important role in our marketing, our video media courses, and our graphic image, graphic imaging programs, not just verbal communication skills, but written and visual communication skills. Critical thinking skills are vital for our students in engineering, automotive, EMT, and all of our information technology courses. Through our Career and Technical Education student organizations such as FBLA, DECA, HOSA, Skills USA, TSA, and FCC LA, students learn many lessons in citizenship. Wellness skills are always in the forefront of courses such as nutrition and wellness, nurse aid, EMT, and all of our biomedical science courses. As we enter 2016-17 school year and look down the road to 2017-18, we have some exciting new opportunities ahead. In 2017-18, we hope to add geospatial technology, cybersecurity, and firefighting courses to Stafford County Public Schools. We are pursuing a partnership with James Madison University to allow our students to earn college credit in geographic science. Germanic Community College has a new cybersecurity career studies certificate program, and we are working with them to develop a pathway into their program. We will be meeting this week with the Stafford County Fire and Rescue Department to develop a plan to reintroduce firefighting courses back into our school system. We will continue our efforts to increase the numbers, a number of partnerships with local companies for student work-based learning opportunities such as internships, cooperative job training, mentorships. And as a result of the new profile of the Virginia graduate, work-based experiences will be a component of the new Virginia diploma. We've already begun working on partnerships between Stafford County Public Schools and businesses in the Stafford Technology Park to bring additional STEM opportunities to students and to enhance the workforce in Stafford County. We will be piloting a program at Stafford High School this year called Technology Tours in partnership with the Regional Chamber of Commerce. Students participating in the program will have the opportunity to explore STEM-related careers throughout the region through tours and informational sessions with local business and industry leaders. Our hope is to expand this opportunity to students in all five high schools the following year. Another focus this year will be our, on our middle school, high, ah, middle school CTE programs, in the hopes of expanding STEM-related opportunities for students in grades six through eight. VDOE is currently reviewing the middle school curriculum, and we are anxiously awaiting new opportunities. At this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to Mrs. Martin, our CTE Advisory Chairperson.
Thank you, Dinah. Thank you, Dinah. Members of the board, faculty, staff, administrators, parents, students, and friends of Stafford County Public Schools, on behalf of the CTE Advisory Committee, I bid you good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to allow us to address this board in the CTE Advisory's end-of-year report. At this time, I would ask that all members of the CTE Advisory Committee for 2015-2016, please stand so that you can be recognized. During the 2015-2016 academic year, we worked with the Stafford County Public Schools CTE staff to identify strengths and wins within our program, as well as to strategize on ways to make the program better and stronger going forward. Some of the committee's concerns are the recruitment and intention and retention of highly qualified teachers in career and technical education. CTE was listed as the 2015-2016 Top 10 Critical Shortage Teaching Endorsement areas in Virginia. And some of the things that we've come up with are the fact that many of our CTE teachers require industry credentials. We are competing with private sector, federal government, state government, and other local government sources to attract and retain these teachers. So what we're hoping to do is to come up with ways that will attract these industry leaders into the classroom. As you know, we cannot attract them with the salaries that we offer, so we're looking at other ways that we might be able to attract them, and perhaps maybe student loan forgiveness or some kind of retention or recruitment incentive might be offered. So we'd ask that we look at that as an opportunity to increase our industry professionals here in Stafford County. We also are looking at, as a concern, the CTE staffing within the schools, once again, the teachers. We have 118 programs, 128 teachers, and we need more, and we need the credentials for those teachers. So we're asking that the committee, oh, I'm sorry, the board, look at that as one of the committee's concerns. We're also looking at the support for the Central Office. So at this point, we're going to be looking at the, all students within the state of Virginia, and that includes Stafford County, having to have a standardized diploma. And so because of that, the CTE program is a part of that, we're going to be looking at all of those students having to be tested or having a class, and so we're going to need staffing to do that. Some of the recommendations that we have are, we're looking at ways to enhance the marketing of our CTE programs. Some of the CTE programs are actually white-collar career paths, and that's the lawyers, the accountants, and things of that nature. So what we want to do is, we want to look at ways to market those programs to our public, to Stafford County, to the students, the parents. We want to get them interested in those program, in the CTE programs, and help them understand that these programs fit into the career cluster in other ways other than just the, what was traditionally called blue-collar work. We'd also looking, we're also looking at ways to increase our efforts to partner with the business community. Dinah's already touched on that. So we're looking at opportunities to increase training and employment opportunities for our students. Some of the things that we'll need to look at there are, of course, how many hours they'll be able to spend in these cross-training programs, in the part, we're looking at part-time employment as one of the options, and we'll have to figure out how we're going to get, how they're going to get back and forth, whether or not they'll be able to subsidize their classroom hours for the time that they spend away from the classroom doing the part-time work. But that's another way that we can increase the visibility of our program. We'd also ask the board to commit to perhaps reviewing the current organizational structure and staffing levels of the CTE office, and to provide us a recommendation maybe by the 2000, end of the 2016-2017 school year, in terms of what we can do about the staffing for that office. We believe, as the Advisory Committee, that the Central Office CTE Department is understaffed, and as we enter this new era with all of the additional graduation requirements, that we'll need a larger staff to manage that workload. We also are looking at the CTE industry certification, and that's what I spoke about earlier, needing additional staff to manage that, and the reporting that comes along with it. The expanded work-based learning opportunities for Virginia, I think Dinah touched on that as well, additional staff, once again, to manage that. And then also the increase of our STEM-related curriculum. We want to be able to offer more exciting programs, and we'll need the staff to be able to do that, so we ask that you take that recommendation into consideration as well. Thank you very much for allowing us to serve you this year, and if there are any questions, please feel free to reach out to us as the CTE Advisory Committee, or to Dinah, or the CTE Staff Office, and thank you again.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions, members? Mr. Hironz?
Just a couple. The adding of, of opportunities like the geospatial program that we're looking at at Stafford, and the cybersecurity and such, is that going to increase our need for the specialized instructor, instructors with specific certifications?
With both the cybersecurity and the geospatial, as a. With both the, um, cybersecurity and the geospatial, as of right now, the cyber, uh, geospatial, you only have to have a tech ed endorsement. You don't have to have a specialized endorsement like Project Lead the Way, like many of our STAT teachers, which was an additional endorsement. With the cybersecurity, they're looking at either business or tech ed. They have not made that final determination yet, but there shouldn't be any additional endorsement. There's tons of training out there going on right now for the existing teachers in that area. In fact, three of our business teachers, uh, sat on the curriculum, uh, state curriculum writing, uh, review team for that, and a couple of them even did training this summer throughout the state, so it's already begun. So there's no additional endorsements like we had with Project Lead the Way. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, it, you do. It still creates a little bit of a challenge there because, you know, as you rightly point out, one of our challenges to keeping these programs up and running is having qualified staff, but then we, ad programs are gonna add these additional needs or potentially additional needs for additional staff.
Right.
With specific, uh, endorsements.
The other thing with the geospatial technology, if we are able to partner with James Madison, they will train our teachers for free, so they will take our current tech ed teachers, anyone that's interested, and train them.
Is that a long-term, do we know, or is that a year-to-year, gonna be a year-to-year agreement?
The JMU.
Yeah.
Uh, one, right now, it's year-to-year. They'll come out each year. It's, it's called a community outreach program that JMU has, and they will come in and work with our teachers, and that's how they can, uh, serve as teacher of record, and our students can receive the dual enrollment credit.
Okay, alright. And last question, did we have Boots House done this year?
Uh, Boots House this year, they just sold, forgive me, the one on Deacon Road, and they, uh-
Try to buy it every day, and I saw that sold time.
That looks good. Uh, they actually took two years to do the newest house, which is in South Gate off Route One, so that should be finishing up this year, and there'll be, uh, they've already started the design for the next one.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Ms. Egan.
Um, just a really quick question, I'm sure you may not know the answer to it or not. Um, the students who are participating in the firefighting and EMS classes, are we offering any of our students, um, any type of incentive to, when they graduate, to, to stay on with Stafford County? Are we, are they graduating and saying, "Hey, I can make more money in Fairfax County"?
I don't have an answer for that. The EMT one, which is the existing program that we have, I, I know some of them are employed, some are not, some move on, some go to college, they do different things. The firefighting one, that can be a convers, part of my conversation on Thursday when we meet with the chief.
Yeah, it would be nice to have some of our graduates actually, you know, stick around in Stafford County and apply what they've learned at Stafford County Public Schools and apply it to Stafford County Fire and Rescue Department, so, thank you.
It's a wonderful program. My son is just finishing up the EMT here in the county, and, uh, it's a wonderful program that you all, that's just one of many.
One of many.
And the kids do have so many, and Dr. Benson mentioned it earlier, uh, has so many different, uh, things to support them at. But the, the one thing I think, um, you know, I would like some more attention on is the credentialing of our students. Uh, I think that's very important, and that's so important when they come out with that auto, automotive credential or electrician's credential. I mean, that's just walk and walk right into a job.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I know you all are doing fabulous work with that, but, uh-
We're working.
That's something I ask about every year, so, keep, let's keep that up.
Ms. Healy.
Sorry, Ms. Healy.
No, that's okay. Um, the geospatial, uh, course, is that something that could be offered at our IB schools? The, the reason I'm asking is, I'm always looking for additional opportunity for those students to get AP, uh, credits.
Well, the intent at this point in time is to pilot it at Stafford High School, and eventually I hope to have it in all five high schools. It will depend on how the pilot goes, the training of the teachers, the cost. Um, the cost for the geospatial will be much less than the cost for the cybersecurity, so it's kinda taking it one year at a time, but eventually, yes.
If there is a possibility of, of putting a pilot or some of those programs into the two IB schools, I, I'm not sure if this is, um, accurate, but, uh, I heard that there are no AP, um, no dual enrollment classes at all at, um, Brookpoint this year. I don't know if that's the case or not, but, um, you know, to the extent that we can have those opportunities in those IB schools for the students that, you know, want to earn the credits, I'd really, you know, like to see that. Um, and also, I want to compliment you on the presentation and the, uh, the format. I, I, I think it was really, um, unique, uh, and I appreciate addressing concerns as well as recommendations, and that, that's, that's a good thing because we need to know what the concerns are and certainly share your concerns, and I would encourage this Board to accept that, uh, commitment. You know, they, they asked us to commit to review that staffing level, you know, before the end of next year, and I would even suggest that we review it before the end of the, the budget season. So we're always saying we're gonna respond to these committee recommendations, and maybe eventually we do, but it's usually about a year later, so it's something for us to keep in mind and, and something that we would get started on, you know, right away. But I'll, I'd certainly be willing to take that, uh, take that on.
Chairman, just very quickly, in response to Mrs. Healy, I thought, um, you, you made last year a, a tasking tracker, so that's something that we do, we probably need to get sent back out to us, but we do have a tasking tracker that, when you have your three concerns, uh, it's put on the tracker, and we're supposed to be briefed, we, we probably need to sit in a work session and go over them.
The quarterly work session.
The quarterly work session, which is coming up, so we haven't seen it in probably a couple of months, but-
But that's last year's, I don't wanna wait till next year to do this one.
You're so-
I was gonna do this year's.
You're very ambitious.
I was gonna put this year's.
That's good, but that's good. So I just wanted to make sure, uh, we, we will see that during our work session, because that's a, that's a big, uh, that's a big deal.
Ms. Ayers.
Good evening, ladies, thank you very much. I, um, enjoyed this, and I, I have a couple, one question. The bigger question I have is, do you all, are you keeping any metrics, or are you planning to keep any metrics to measure or track some of your graduates, see what they do, where they go, do they come back, kinda thing?
The one thing we already have in place is something that's required of, by VDOE, and it's called the CTE follow-up surveys. So one year after our completers in our program graduate, we send out a survey to them, and we're required to at least get a seventy-five percent return rate, and that's part of our Perkins Grant and state funding requirement. And in that, we do get some information from them, but we've already, uh, talked about additional ways of tracking, especially our STAT kids. That's something I, I'm focusing on, is following up with them, and did the STAT program actually help them at the next level? So that is something that we're looking at.
I think there'd be a great opportunity to use to get funding, to support the funding effort and get more teachers in as well, to see how well we're doing out there, so thank you.
Ms. Kidby.
Just real quick, um, I understand we have a hundred and eighteen programs, and I'm going to assume that, um, you evaluate those programs on an annual basis to determine whether or not, as we bring new opportunities in, like cyber security, there are opportunities that, that may no longer be of interest to students, and we're dropping those off so that we can maintain a good balance of our offerings for our students.
There's nothing formally in place, however. I recently had a conversation with our new Director of Accountability, and that's gonna be one of the things that they work on this year, working with me on evaluating all of our CTE programs.
Terrific, thank you so much.
And just a side note, as new courses come in, we do have to do our CTE, uh, course application with the state, and we have to use statistics about local employment needs and things like that before it's actually approved.
Alright, thank you.
I'm glad I get to get the final word. I had the honor of working with these two ladies and the wonderful committee. They are one of the most hard-working committees, I have to say, and really dedicated to what they're doing. It was an honor to serve with you all. Um, and I would just like to say, I remember about a year ago when, or I guess maybe it was two years ago, when we did the study of our comparison divisions, we had something about our CTE programs, and I remember us rating very high in that area of our graduates and getting those certifications, and it was actually one of the higher numbers of our nine comparison divisions. I can't pull it, I can see it in my hot head, but I thought that was something that was actually really awesome for us to know and to take away, um, take away from us. So I know we're doing, um, a lot in that area, but there's always more to be done. So with our new staffing plan that we just passed, I know that, I believe there are CTE sections, so when we reevaluate, we'll be looking at that and making sure that your input-
Thank you.
-is in there, so, thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is our Virginia Municipal League VML overview of loss prevention and claims history. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Martin, then-
Good morning, ma'am.
Since you're jumping up.
Good afternoon or good evening, whatever it is.
All this morning.
Yeah, really.
Well, this is good.
School board member with Dr. Benson. It's my pleasure to announce tonight that VML's gonna present their annual insurance program, and I have three individuals from VML tonight that are here, and the first one is Jeff Cole, Director of Member Services, and Harry McMillian, Senior Accounting Executive, and Fonda Craig, Senior Safety Consultant. Okay?
Welcome.
Thank you, um, thank you for allowing us to speak this afternoon. Um, first, I'd like to just go over some of the risk management programs that Stafford County Schools, uh, participate in, which would, has allowed them to see a reduction in their insurance. First, they are receiving a five percent credit, uh, for implementing a hundred percent of the risk management guidelines. Our risk management guidelines are, um, policies and procedures that are basically best practices for mitigating risk. Some of the guidelines include, uh, using a panel of physicians, having a return-to-work program, um, collecting, uh, certificates of, of, um, insurance, investigating incidents, having a safety committee, having a self-inspection program. That's some of the items that are on the, um, the risk management guidelines. Because they have implemented a hundred percent of those guidelines, uh, and they've received this five percent credit since two thousand and eight, each year for two, uh, since two thousand and eight. And this year's, uh, savings is over twenty-seven thousand dollars because of their participation in that piece. Then we have the, uh, five percent, uh, credit on the auto liability coverage, and that's because they participate in the Weather Robby meets the road program. And our Weather Robby meets the road program is a driver training program, and the requirements are that they provide annual driver training in the area of, of, um, defensive driving and, um, addressing, uh, accident trends. Also, it requires them to have program items in place, such as, um, obtaining the annual motor vehicle reports, having a vehicle use policy, uh, that includes, um, the use of, um, hands-free, uh, use of mobile devices or mobile communication devices, and that's for all departments, as well as, um, having an accident review committee. Those are some of the program pieces that, uh, go along with the, uh, Weather Robby meets the road program. And this year's savings is, uh, over thirty-one hundred dollars, and again, that's five percent, an additional five percent on the auto liability coverage, and they've been receiving that, uh, discount since two thousand and twelve.
Uh, the next piece I wanted to address is your workers' compensation. With all these safety policies you have in place and the return-to-work policies, you are actually receiving a thirty-three percent reduction or credit on your workers' compensation coverage for this year. That results in about a sixty-two thousand dollar savings.
Uh, they also take advantage of the risk management grant program, and that is funds, that's funds that are available, um, to, um, to the school to help them to implement various, uh, safety programs. Uh, if they identify any exposures that they may need funding to help, uh, implement or to, to take care or to mitigate, then those funds are available. And to date, they've, um, received over six thousand dollars for that. They also take advantage of the online university, and we have over a hundred and twenty-five topics. There are HR-related and safety-related topics, uh, mainly the, um, Transportation Department is the ones that's, uh, taken advantage of those courses. They've taken over fourteen hundred, um, courses, online courses, um, since, uh, let's say, July of two thousand and fourteen, so, uh-
Which is an amazing number.
It is, it really is.
Considering other school districts, I'm sure.
Yeah, and some of the, uh, topics that they've taken advantage of is winter driving, defensive driving, conflict resolution, power, respectful languages. Those are some of the, uh, topics that have blood-borne pathogens, that type of thing, so.
Okay.
And, uh, in addition to the online university, the school employees have also attended a lot of our VML workshops. Uh, they've attended, uh, fall workshops in Fredericksburg, our webinars, uh, onsite training workshops. Our safety department also does OSHA training. Uh, they participated in the OSHA ten-hour and taken advantage of a lot of our videos and our training kits. This is a picture, uh, back in May, where Annette Hall, uh, received an award for excellence in risk management. Each year, VML selects twelve, uh, members out of our five hundred members who excel, uh, in risk management as far as safety policies, um, keeping, uh, the students safe, the employees safe, and also keeping the cost down for the insurance. Some of the things that Annette has done, uh, and why she has selected for the award, is she always does detailed inspection processes. Uh, she organizes meetings to review losses, she discusses preventive measures, uh, always ensures a thorough walkthrough is done at each and every school. She ensures that hazards are documented, and when possible, fixed right there on the spot, and she's been instrumental in maintaining a five-year loss ratio of thirty-three percent, which is roughly half of our member average, uh, member average in the program, sixty-five.
The services that the, uh, risk management department here take advantage of, that we offer, um, Fonda and Harry have just mentioned, the rubber meets the road, the online training, the, um, the onsite driver training with a simulator that we have, uh, and let's not forget claims. Uh, when we have a claim, we, um, you folks, uh, report online, which means we get it immediately, which means we act quickly, um, which reduces cost of claims. You have online access to claims, which means you're informed. Uh, we also have in-house subrogation for liability third-party claims. These are all, uh, services that help reduce the cost of your, your claims activity, and you do have deductibles. Uh, that definitely helps. Under the liability side, well, I just wanna point out one or two things, that the employment practice consulting services you folks take advantage of, which helps us, um, advise you on those employee-related issues that you may have, and communication crisis, uh, services, uh, in case, uh, there is something that affects the school division, uh, that you need, um, some advice on consulting the media. The, the claim services are the same as one before, and we'll point out that this is your workers' comp, uh, what's called gross incurred, which means what's been paid and what is reserved. Um, the only reason I bring this here is because I wanna show you that this is a very positive trend. Uh, your, uh, risk management team here has been doing an excellent job, and I can tell you as a former consultant, uh, it's one of the best we have. As you can see, the gross incurred has gone down from two thousand and twelve. Uh, there's reasons for that, and that's because they hustle. Um, and they try to reduce, the average cost of, of these claims, which is gross incurred divided by the, the number of claims you have each year, same trend, positive. Going left to right, you can see it, it's going down. Look at your payroll, your payroll's not going down. Uh, your payroll went down a couple of years, and then it went back up, so, you know, these, uh, with that, you normally have an increase in claims count, workers' comp, and, uh, costs. With your deductible, this helps you a lot to be able to keep those costs down. Those are the claims counts, and you go back to the payroll increase, it's pretty, pretty flat in the last couple of years, and I commend everybody who works in that risk management department's excellent job. Um, again, we have many schools that we insure and have for about thirty-five years. They do a great job. And, um, annual indemnity days, those are the days that, uh, the, the employees are out of work, and they're receiving wage replacement after seven days of being out of work. You can see the trend's going down. Why is that going down? Well, that's because in two thousand and fourteen, you established a return-to-work restricted-duty program, and the days went up of restricted duty, but your indemnity days went down, and that means your claims costs went down, and since you have a large deductible, that means the school's costs went down. So I advise you to stick with that program, it is working. And the last one, Harry.
Uh, this again is your experience modifiers that I mentioned earlier. Uh, the current year, which is fiscal year seventeen, you have a thirty-three percent, um, uh, credit, which is roughly sixty-two percent. Um, as you can see, going back to fiscal year fourteen, it's been a positive trend. Uh, that credit has grown out of one of the, the best, uh, in the, in the program, so I congratulate you and the risk management staff on that.
You have any questions? We promised fifteen men, we delivered twelve.
Good job.
That's right.
Thank you. You needed it tonight.
Any, any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment.
Sure.
So it looks like, uh, because our folks are doing such a good job, they're saving us about a hundred thousand dollars a year on that premium, is that right? All right.
And then not only on the premium, but because of your large deductible and workers' comp, you're saving a great deal of money on that, even more so. So that combined, it's a good direction.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all for coming, and thanks to our staff for all the hard work they've done to save us money and, like, the trends, so, thank you very much. All right, moving on to public comments. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose and/or topic of their comments. Three minutes, three minutes will be allotted to speakers. You will see, there will be a green light that starts. Uh, the yellow light means one minute, red means you're done, five seconds to wrap up. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes, with the approval of the Board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the Board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities, may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy eleven thirteen- or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. I have one person who has signed up. If there are any, is there, is anybody else who would like to also address the board while they are speaking? If you will go ahead and line up behind them. So I have Audrey Mangrum. I'm gonna see if I completely... And again, if anybody else would like to speak, if you can just line up behind her and come right up to the podium. Thank you.
Hello. Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Audrey. I'm at 55 Wagoneers Lane. I am here as a concerned parent of my student who attends Winding, Winding Creek Elementary. I'm concerned about, that I've heard a significant amount of teachers have left the school and at the end of this year. Some, some things that have been said, it's roughly 40%, which seems very high. However, as, just as a concerned parent, I'd like to know if this is accurate, or if it's, you know, if it's true or not, parents talk, so I don't know. I am very concerned about it. My student is entering the fourth grade, and I know only two teachers are left out of the whole team. So that's why I'm here, to find out what's going on, and it is such a good school, and we've been very happy with it. And as we're entering into the more critical years of him moving on into middle school and everything, I'd like to find out exactly what's going on.
How this works is we don't engage in the dialogue, but now that you've brought that to us, I know it says you've asked for a written response, or there will be some research and reaching out to you. We have your information. If you want to provide your email as well to our clerk, or that would be great as well.
Sure, I can do that. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening? If not, moving on, we will move right on to superintendent's comments.
Just one this evening, Madam Chair. We'll be hosting our first summer graduation ceremony at Brookpoint High School on Saturday, August 13th. That's this coming Saturday at 11 o'clock. We would love for any, all of you to join us if you're interested. If you would please just let Diane Bender know. This is something different for us as a, as a division. These are students that met the requirements for graduation during summer school, and we're, we're holding a separate graduation to celebrate their accomplishment and, and we'll spend a little time on Saturday recognizing them, so just want to share that.
Are we doing caps and gowns?
Not required for, for staff. We will have caps and gowns for students that are participating, so no gowns required if you would like to attend.
All right.
I am speaking.
That's a long-winded one.
All right. Do I have a motion regarding consent? My gosh.
Motion to approve consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to action items. 12.01 to select a delegate and alternate to represent the school board at the V SBA convention in November. I had indicated I was willing to serve as a delegate since, at this time, I'm planning on going. I don't know if anybody else has any dying interest or would like to be...
I had planned on going to a solid date.
Oh, yes.
You know, birthday cake.
I was gonna say, a birthday cake would be appropriate, so it's, that's Scott's birthday.
It's on the 17th. It starts on the 17th of November.
I will probably serve as an alternate.
All right. Is there anybody who would like to serve as the alternate? Who believes they're going?
No, I really, I plan on going.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to be the alternate?
Or do you want to be either way? Do you want to be the main? I don't care.
No.
Okay. All right. Can we have a motion regarding that? In order to select our delegate, we do need a motion. If, if, can we move it?
I, I move that Ms. Hazard be the delegate and Mr. Hironz be the alternate, and that they have discretion to change that between them if they so choose.
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to action item 12.02. Mr. McCosker, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve 12.02 for discussion or amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Open for discussion. I, I would like to actually, myself, ask for potentially a friendly amendment. I would like to ask for an additional caveat for the display of the school board member's photographs. I would like to add to that disqualification would also include, in the event that a school board member or past school board member is convicted of a felony or crime of moral perpetuity, or becomes the subject of a founded complaint of child abuse or neglect, the board shall decline to install or remove the photograph from display. This language is similar to the language in Virginia Code Section 22.1307 related to dismissal of teachers for these specific reasons, and I believe that the board should follow that practice.
I wholeheartedly approve that amendment.
Support. Is there any...
Madam Chairman, I think, I think we should put on here that the, the former members have the, the right to approve the picture and the plaque that's up there. Just, just as, just as a courtesy, I mean, you know.
Yeah, bring that up to Mr. McCosker. Do you want to amend?
Well, I, I think that's a courtesy. If you're gonna, if this is gonna be like a, you know, forever picture, you don't want one that someone finds unattractive.
Right. The only, the only other thing is, is that we're not gonna incur additional expenses to, to get a new picture taken because they don't like the one that was taken 15 or 20 years ago.
Well, there weren't any taken, though. That's the problem.
Or however long ago it was. Oh, my hair came out terrible. I want a new picture. It's not gonna happen.
They haven't, it hasn't been that long since we started taking these pictures. I mean, when I started, way back when, in the old days, they didn't take pictures. So it's been fairly recent, so, you know, we may have to, to get a picture, but I just think that that's, that's a courtesy.
I got no problem adding that in as well.
But I, I like your idea, no additional expense.
Yeah, I got that.
All right. Does everybody understand the motion and as amended? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the 12.0, excuse me, 12.03 regarding the budget development calendar.
Madam Chair, motion to approve 12.03.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded for discussion. I know that the board had directed the Finance and Budget Committee to talk about this, so I will actually, if the board does not mind, allow Ms. Kibbe to speak to that or a member of them.
Just real quickly, one of the agenda items that we addressed, in addition to several others, by the way, there are minutes if the board is interested in all the areas that we discussed, but one of them had to do with this budget calendar, and there were some additions and deletions from the calendar. One of the additions was, had to do with September 13th, bringing budget priorities draft to the full board. Now, that one has not been added. I think there was some concern about being able to get that into the budget in a timely manner. We did add September 27th as school board voting on the budget priorities. We changed some wording in relation to the public hearing. We removed the school board vote for the budget priorities on November 9th. We changed the February 25th budget work session to February 11th, just brought it up a little bit. And we added an additional February 14th budget work session if needed. That's a kind of a if-needed budget work session. If we can get it done on that Saturday, we've typically had a budget work session on a Saturday. That's why the February 11th was added. If we can get everything done and squared away on that Saturday, then we won't need the additional budget work session. Is that the holiday weekend? President's weekend? It's not... No, no. So the President's is the 20th? Yeah, we looked at that to make sure it wasn't.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah. All right. But, good call there, Ms. Healy.
Are there any other comments about the... Was that a wave or a...
It was fine.
I would just like to add to what Ms. Kibbe said. This allows the additional time for staff as we implement some of the MUNIS capabilities and allows for weather events, which I feel like the more we move it forward, you can always move it down, but I believe it was the intent of this board expressed last year after Mr. Hironz and I presented the budget to the Board of Supervisors, that we need to make working on the budget a priority early in January and February for presentation. So I think that was some of the decision.
And again, part of the rationale is in our, in our hopes to be able to have an approved budget, a, a board-approved budget, maybe not, certainly not adopted, but an approved budget prior to the county administrator presenting a budget to the Board of Supervisors. That's our hope for this year.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, 12.04, approve appointment of advisory committee members. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve 12.04.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to information items. Our first one is 13.01, receive information regarding the joint contracting officer position. I will start, I guess, with Dr. Benson on this one.
Well, we have included in the agenda item a draft job description that was informed by the work of supervisors and staff on local government side. So joint position, jointly funded, and we're, we're gonna need the board to kind of weigh in on various aspects of the proposed job description, as well as, I think, moving forward, some kind of memo of understanding as to how we're going to work with this contracting officer, given that this, I believe, will be the first time we've had a position that was jointly funded by the two boards.
I'm gonna also ask Ms. Kibbe, this was also, I believe, at the last meeting, asked for some review by the Finance and Budget, if you wanna give a quick update.
Yeah. We talked about this at some length at the Finance and Budget Committee meeting in terms of the school board having some, some input on the job description. We were specifically interested in making sure that this contract officer would have some experience in, in contracting in the state of Virginia and have a clear definition of how they'll work with each board. Those are important things. Now, having discussed this as a Fab, we felt that it was better if the three-on-three committee were to include this in the agenda of their next meeting and have an open dialogue with the Board of Supervisors about some of the areas where we feel that they could enhance the job description that they've put together and how we could go forward with a memorandum of understanding between the two boards so that we can get going. We're anxious to get going with this contract officer position.
The board may be aware that this description has already been approved by the Board of Supervisors. I have provided a draft letter, but if it's the will of the board to wait until the three-on-three, we can. I know that we would like to get this moving across the street with, with hiring. If, if the board would like to review that and get back, I, it, it may go on the, Mr. Hironz, as the chair of three-on-three, if you would prefer to wait, it's up to you. I know there's some desire to get this moving.
Yeah, and kind of my opinion on that is, if we're close, if, you know, there, there was some concern, I'm a little bit concerned about the, how it seems to read is it's gonna require federal contracting experience, which I don't know if, it, it's good preferred experience, but I don't know if it's necessarily required, should be required experience, because the experience within the state, state of Virginia in particular, their state and local government is much more important. And, and, you know, there's just a couple little things like that. If we can give, if we can somehow authorize the, the three-on-three to be, to say, yes, this is good, let's get it out there and publish, because we've been working on this for several months now, and it's something that we need to get rolling here, probably sooner than later. Probably would have been good to have someone like this on board beginning of summer, beginning of fiscal year, rather than what will now be mid to late fiscal year.
Then that's fine, then we will just direct you to, I guess, communicate our comments. There is a draft letter that I think summarizes at least what was discussed at the Fab, so I had drafted that. Mr. Hironz, I will let you just take this as some of the talking points that I think the Fab communicated. I do think one thing we definitely want to ensure is, in the hiring process, that there is equal representation, since we are paying for half of it. So I will leave this as some talking points, yes.
Does that mean you're not gonna send the letter?
Well, that's what I'm trying to get a sense of this board to, of what...
It sounds like, I think we can probably just handle it in discussion, live discussion on 22nd.
Because if we send the letter, I found a typo.
You did.
Surprise. Perhaps after the discussion, it may be appropriate to send a follow-up memorandum or letter of some kind. Certainly, the three-on-three can make that determination after their discussion.
I do think it's important that there's a memorandum.
But we're not gonna be meeting until...
Your meeting on the 22nd?
Right, but I mean, when, this is a board meeting again.
And that, that's why I'm asking, if we can, if it's, if it's in need of a motion tonight to authorize at least our side of three-on-three to, to finalize it with the, with the three-on-three, three from the Board of Supervisors. Now, if they want to go back to their full board and then, you know, you know, have a board motion at that point to approve it, fine, but we'll, we'll get back and forth on, on the tennis ball here.
I think we can look at, we can take the, I think we take the, you know, if you just give us the approval to take this, we'll work it, we'll, we'll get, put the, the concerns of the board in front of the three-on-three, work it out with them, and then we'll come follow up with a board-approved memo saying, here it is, here's the final, so you'll still be able to see the final. Does that make sense?
Where are they in the, the process?
They've approved it on July 6th.
So really, this clock is ticking. We know from our copy machine experience that we need to have this contracting officer. So perhaps if, if these, if these are just minor points, if, if you would even want to present them to, who, who is their chairman on our committee?
Jack.
To, to Mr. Cavalier, you know, to get that started. I mean, I, I'd rather see this, this whole recruitment go sooner rather than later, and I think your points are absolutely critical, you know, for experience in this position.
Madam Chair, didn't we also have a discussion about following up, let the three-on-three have that discussion, but we were gonna follow up with a memorandum of understanding?
Absolutely.
That maps out all of the, all of the points, everything that we discussed at the Fab meeting.
Signed by both chair, both chairs at least.
Both chairs, right, exactly. So I, I want to make sure that that's part of the discussion at the three-on-three, that there is going to be an MOU.
Yeah.
That addresses that.
Yeah, is it okay if we discuss it there? Because I think we could probably publish, you know, get, get the, the position, you know, approved and advertised, and then follow up with a...
Yeah.
MOU at some point before the person's on board.
And we can even say that our commitment to funding is contingent on execution of a mutually agreeable MOU.
Right. That's, that's good for me, yep.
So use this as talking points. If there's any additional information, please make sure that members of the three-on-three, I think this draft summarized some of the conversations, just to get everybody seeing a piece of paper.
Yeah.
All right, so even though we don't need a motion...
Do we need any sort of motion out of that for, given the three-on-three, our three members authorization to...
I think a poll would do the same thing without having a formal motion.
It looks like there is general agreement to have the three-on-three move forward with the comments, this comment is laid up.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, that after that meeting, unless, you know, something really blows up and we have to rewrite paragraphs, that after that August 22nd meeting, we can consider it approved by the school board, publish it. We need a formal vote by the school board to say that.
Right. That's what I was gonna say. And, and if we have to send something out through Roberta, here's what we're gonna move forward with. You know, if I, if I go to the contracting guru, look at this tomorrow, and he goes, well, that, 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 you know what I mean, so that's, but...
We'd like to be able to, in my opinion, out of the three-on-three, if they want to go forward to start to recruit and hire this person, the sooner the better. I want to make sure that this board is comfortable that if it's generally along the lines that we've discussed, the comments and concerns that we have listed...
Yeah, I think the Board of Supervisors target was pretty cool.
They consider it approved. They, their expectation is, we're gonna vote to approve this from our side as well tonight. But we have a couple of... But we have a couple, yeah, but we have a little edit, and I think they're minor in nature.
Yeah, like I said, I think this is...
They see that as well.
This is 80% there, so, yeah.
All right. Well, we will leave that with the three-on-three. All right, let's move on to approve proposed amendments to policy 1111 committees. Is there, oops, information? Sorry, sorry.
We're on information.
We've already talked about this.
Since it's three words, can we move to action?
Yeah, then we don't have to deal with it next year.
Exactly. I make a motion to move this to action.
Second.
Whatever number it is.
It's been moved and seconded to move 1302 to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a follow-on motion?
Move to approve 1302, whatever the appropriate number may be.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13.02 is approved. Moving on to 13.03, approve superintendent's recommended amendments to regulation 3609. Dr. Ben, or, sorry, Mr. Nichols.
In a review of the Virginia School Board Association's policies, regulations, it was found that we needed to upgrade, or actually update, our language in our current policies to reflect the current status of Virginia School Board Association. So, the language was only updated to reflect their recommendations at this point.
It was just a change in language?
Yes, ma'am.
Not the program or anything else?
No.
Are there any discussions?
I think this will be helpful, because it actually makes more clear what the criteria is. So, I think this will help the students and their families if they're, they want to go on that alternative path. So, I think it'd be helpful.
All right.
Make it easier, make the agenda smaller next month, that we move this to action.
It's up to you all.
Is everybody all right?
Any reason it should...
I'd make a motion to move this to action, 1303.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move 1303, yes, to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
To approve 1303?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It is approved. All right. This is a related item. I believe we probably...
13.04. But is there a requirement that policies be on the agenda a certain amount of times? So, perhaps if we, if we don't have a problem with this, then we could perhaps suggest to be put on the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Or this particular one.
I agree with Ms. Healy. We need to, our constituents to have an opportunity to read through the, any policy change. And even though we, the regulation supports the policy, I think moving that to action is fine, but if there's an actual policy change, I'd prefer to just put it on consent for next time.
That's fine. All right. Any questions regarding 13.04? All right. Moving on to 13.05. I believe this is Mr. Fitzgerald. Recommended flex time and flex place work hours for Election Day, November 8th, 2016.
Yes, ma'am. At the request of the voter registrar, we are making a recommendation that we allow for flex time, flex work hours, that is, and flex work location for November the 8th for our employees, particularly those employees, teachers, and those that are in our buildings throughout the county. November 8th is a teacher work day for our employees. Students are off that day. That is the election day. That is the particularly strong election day for, that is the presidential election day this year. And so, we will be very busy at our polls. And our voter registrar is particularly interested in ensuring that we have a lot of flexibility in our parking and in our voter traffic. So, the question was asked, and we have responded with a recommendation to allow for as much freedom within that traffic area so that our voters can come and go. We are recommending that we do allow for our central, our main office at the schools where the voting is taking place, where those employees still report, and that would include the administration there and administrative clerical staff as well. But all other employees be allowed and required, basically, to work at another location, or as long as they're approved to work at home even, but they would be allowed to do so. And so, we're making that recommendation, as well as our other sites. We're similarly proposing that other sites be permitted to do so as well, so as not to differentiate any differently from, at our other locations. But if they wanted to come in at the other sites, that would be fine. We're not saying that they cannot come in at the other sites. Only at the voter sites would we say they would be restricted, but not the office, they would be permitted. And there is, and I was thinking, you know, there is parking available in other areas in the back of the building. If the office staff needed to have a separate voting, parking area, they could do that in most locations. Central office would report, and we're recommending that the Wyatt Lane, that's the transportation and the maintenance departments, would report to their job locations on those days. They would not necessarily have the flex time, flex hours, flex location applied to them.
Questions, Ms. Healy?
Mr. Fitzgerald, this is traditionally a day when the teachers have parent-teacher conferences. I know it's somewhat crowded when the parents are coming in and the voters are coming in, but I want to be sure that we have coordinated this with the schools, and this isn't going to put an undue burden on the teachers, because they're going, this is going to have to be rescheduled.
Not really. I don't mean to jump in on you, Ms. Healy, but it's a critical one, too. It's a critical teacher work day where they have parent-teacher conferences, because it's the first time parents really get a good assessment of how their student is doing in that school year. So, I do have a problem. You know, this isn't about the teachers being able, or any staff being able to work flexibly, but I have a problem with the registrar asking us to make this change when it's, it's actually a critical work day for our staff.
I don't know when we would reschedule it, or, Mrs. Cale, do you have a solution?
We have...
I want to accommodate parents and teachers and meet this need.
Yes. We've talked to a number of the elementary principals. Ms. Neely has talked to a number of elementary principals. Many are talking about, and I'm not saying everybody, I'm just talking in general, have talked about the next week. There's also an early release that some are talking about having at the early release, and then some opportunities at night for parent conferences. So, they're making accommodations for that.
Is staff going to be able to essentially take time off on that election day if they have to come in in the evening?
And that's what historically they've done. They've made accommodations to give time back for that evening.
I hope our response to him is also, start looking for alternate locations for voting. I know we had this discussion back with the primary, and I hope that discussion has not ended, and we're continuing to work with the registrar to ensure the safety of our students and our staff and our buildings is of the highest priority.
Maybe I'm just confused. Are we suggesting that after the polls close, there's going to be conferences?
No, no. It will vary, it will be a school-based decision, as it has been in the past. But the catch, for example, is the next week, there's an early release day. A couple of schools are talking about having, and they were anyway before this happened, their parent conference, the early release, and then stay a little at night, and then we do give them extra time off for that.
Here's my concern.
Some are doing nights, et cetera. Yes.
Typically, particularly in this, in this greater Washington D.C. area, this is a holiday, which makes it very convenient for parents to be able to come in for a conference. Now, if we schedule it for another day, it's less convenient for our parents. Not only less convenient for our staff, but less convenient for our parents as well. Those are, and I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't do this. I'm just saying that it does create some challenges.
Yeah, I'm concerned from a parent standpoint and from a teacher's standpoint as well. Every week that we goes by at that time is going to be critical. I mean, if a parent needs to talk to a teacher and get some feedback and something about what the parent can be doing to help the child, or the parent gives some information to the teacher, I mean, that's important. I just don't, I guess I don't understand why we can't allow our teachers in the schools, because basically, it sounds like we're banning the teachers from the school that day, which really is not acceptable to me. You know, first concern, and second is, you know, the impact on these parent-teacher conferences. Now, if it didn't make any difference one week to the next, that'd be something else, but I think Mrs. Kidby and Mr. Hironz's points are well taken. I mean, a lot of, a lot of people plan on this because it's their day off, or they may not be able to take off some other time. So, it's not just the inconvenience, you know, to our employees, but it's to the families, and ultimately, the impact on the students by when these are scheduled. And if you told me we were moving them up a week, maybe I could feel better about that, because we wouldn't be putting it, you know, moving it forward. But I just have some concerns. This is one for information now, so this gives us a chance to get some feedback. We certainly want to cooperate, you know, with the registrar to the extent it is feasible and does not serve as a detriment to the operation of our schools.
All right. Any further comments or information that the board would like regarding this item? Okay. All right. Then let's move on to 1306. This is regarding the VPSA sale of bonds for the 2016 fall pool. I would believe this would be Mr. Fulmer, if anybody has any questions.
One question.
Yes.
Yes. Did you want to ask it?
No, go ahead.
With the...
I'm looking at the fall and spring borrows fiscal year 2017 chart here, and it says the project estimate cost for Moncur is $35,306,305. I thought we reduced that at our last go-round. Does that, does that include taking out that gymnasium and the narrower hallways?
Yes, ma'am. It was around 37...
Still $35 million?
It was around 37.9 million when we briefed the overall project cost. That includes the cost of the land, that 35. Just so you know...
But the land's not costing us anything. We didn't pay a penny for the land. The county paid for it.
Total project cost for, that's what we included in the 30...
But it's not a cost. It didn't cost Stafford County Public Schools something. If you're going to say that, you're going to have to footnote it, because if we're, we're not paying $35 million. We didn't pay anything for the land. We're basically trading the current site for the new site under our memorandum of understanding.
We can do that. Yes, ma'am. We can do that.
So, why is that a project cost?
Well, that's the figure. We carried 31.3, and that was the total project cost that we carried previously. And so, we were just trying to be consistent, but we can certainly change that.
Well, we're going for that new math. We're starting at the baseline.
Yes, ma'am. We'll make that change, absolutely. We'll take the land out, the 1.7 for the land, so it'll drop it down by that amount. But it does include the concessions that the board decided to make, not to go with the larger hallways and to reduce the gym size. So, they have been reduced. It was about $2.4 million, if you recall. And then the remaining 3.9 million deficit that we, the board discussed, was, we decided to reallocate some funds from infrastructure projects, about $2 million there. And then the rest of it, we were going to pursue operational savings, as well as to look at potential profit dollars. So, that was to make up that 3.9.
I didn't realize it was so high. I'm thinking, I'm thinking back in the day when I started here, it was $10 million for an elementary school. Then it went up to 20.
Yeah, this day's a rumor.
Yeah, now it's at 37. Woo!
So, we'll make that change on the land.
Sandy Hook was $50 million for a mill.
Just as a side note, that has been, we have note, we have noted several times about our concern about that cost of the land being in the CIP. I think we've mentioned it every time it's come.
Well, maybe they'll change it this time.
Because that is then a reduction on the CIP. So, I think that's something we need to continue to pursue.
Just an FYI...
Tell them to do it! Pursue it.
Well, we approve it, and, you know, it's not our approval document, it's theirs.
Just an FYI, that doesn't affect our borrow. That was just on here as informational purposes.
But it's a public document, and people looking at this are going to think that those are the numbers, and those aren't the numbers. We have enough trouble keeping track of these numbers without having to explain why they're not exactly what they are. So, it's, how much is that? 1.7? 1.7. That's a lot of money to add in there that isn't really a cost to us. Maybe a cost to the county, but it's not a cost to us. And if we were going to put that, we would probably have to factor in the value of the Moncur site, which is, I'm sure, going to be significantly more than 1.7 million.
Right. If we're going to play that...
You get a credit for that.
Correct. Is this a needed item, Mr. Fulmer, or...
No.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kidby.
That's okay, that's okay. The $5 million is, that borrow, that $5 million borrow, is that mainly for design?
No, Scott can actually address that.
I vacated quickly. No, what we try to do is, we try to, you know, originally, we were planning to bid this project in the January, February timeframe.
Sure.
And so, knowing that if we awarded it in April, and the contractor started, started in April, the next, the spring borrow wouldn't occur, the money wouldn't deposit until late May, so we have some draws on the construction side. So, some of that money is for construction also.
Site development?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. This has to be approved by the supervisors, does it not?
Yes.
So, this needs to go over. If we approve this tonight, would that help speed this up or not?
It surely would. We have a few days' gap, as long as it's approved at your September meeting. It doesn't have to be, for us to turn in the application, it doesn't have to be approved by the Board of Supervisors yet. This is just the authorization for the application.
Let's come back in September.
Yes, okay.
Get the numbers straight, and it'll get approved.
Sure. Did I hear consent for the next agenda? Is that what I heard?
Yeah.
Put it on consent.
What's the corrected numbers?
Absolutely.
Got it. We got it.
Want to be clear, Mrs. Kidby, do we not? We shall be clear.
That's all. However, it does carry in that CIP, that 1.7 number's in there. We ask about it every time. So, maybe we, maybe this will be a way for us to begin to get that CIP process changed and modified, as we have talked about extensively. I'm sorry, Ms. Healy.
Madam Chair, the one, I would say, if this is an issue with this one number, this one cost, maybe look at all of the costs to make sure that they're not including something that isn't a real cost. If the land isn't a cost, if it's something we didn't buy, then we're saying it shouldn't be in there. If there's any other numbers in here or costs in here that should not be in these numbers, I would say we need to take a look at all of them.
Then I will not put it on consent at this time. Ms. Kidby? I'm sorry. Oh, I thought you said you had to follow on. I'm sorry. All right, moving on to 13.07. Approve this Stafford County Public School Head Start enrollment in the federal government's Community Eligibility Provision Program. Let's see, this would be Mr. Dunbrack and Mr. Hironz, I believe. I believe people have read through this, but any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Well, I don't.
Is this one that could be...
We approve this one because we want the kids to get lunch and breakfast at no charge, beginning the first day of school. If we don't approve this now, it's not going to be the case.
Correct. It's kind of a no-brainer, and it's going to drastically increase our reimbursement amounts, and it's going to decrease our office amounts. We normally have to call in extra staff to process the drastic amount of free and reduced applications. Through this program, we would not have to take any type of free-reduced applications at Melcher, and it would also lock in that reimbursement rate for four years.
Doesn't the city of Fredericksburg do that in some of their schools?
I do not believe Fredericksburg does. Certain areas have a community-wide CIP program where every single school is on this. Melcher is the only school in this district that would qualify for it.
That would qualify.
I know some other people do. I have no problem.
What's the qualification percentage, do you know?
Yes, we're at just over 95%, 95.23%. So, based on that, we get 100% free breakfast and lunch.
What's the criteria for free and reduced in order to be able to get this program?
Anything over 65% would then factor into what the rate would be. Essentially, they'd take whatever free and reduced rates you'd have, they'd times that by 1.6%, and they would determine what rate that you would get. Based on that percentage over 95%, there wouldn't be anything. Everybody would get free. There wouldn't be anything, everybody would get free. And it would lock that in for four years. So let's say if next year we were to go down to 80%, which might reduce our rate to reduce, we would still lock in at that free rate for the next four school years.
Ms. Neely, could you look at some of our elementaries and see if we're pretty close? I think we may have one or two that might be close to 65. Okay, particularly, particularly one, you know the one I'm talking about.
Number one.
Yeah, it may be very close.
We have two other, we do have two other elementary schools that qualify for severe need program, but not for the community eligibility program. And what that is, is essentially an additional six cents per meal over the reimbursement rate at breakfast and lunch. So next year, the rates will be 318 for lunch and 171 for breakfast. Two elementary schools in question.
Yeah.
Will receive an additional six cents.
Okay.
It would not apply to Melcher, it would be 100% free there, breakfast and lunch.
Okay, thanks. Based on the potential need and the viability to start the school year.
Mr. Hirin's want to make a motion?
Move to 1307 to action?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move 1307 to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to approve 1307?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You may go ahead and file your application.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I've decided I half like you.
And actually, we should make sure our new communication office has that information because this is something that I think would be good to make known to the public.
Absolutely. It's an excellent community outreach program, absolutely.
Thank you.
I can say that the Head Start Policy Council did talk about this and was very excited that we might be able to provide this. Okay, moving on, 13.08, approve the use of Staples Advantage for office, school, and other workplace-related supplies and services through August 2019. Let's see, Mr. Fulmer again, I'm sorry. Are there any questions regarding this item?
Just a comment, if I could.
I appreciate you bringing this forward to the board, and I know it doesn't require that, but I appreciate it since it is a significant dollar amount when you look at total expenditures of well over $1 million on an annual basis. I know that this particular organization is very, very good to work with in that regard, so I appreciate you bringing this forward.
Sure.
Was that you, Mr. McCusker?
I was just going to ditto those comments. I appreciate it, even though it wasn't required due to the $75,000. It is 1.00 million, 1.7 million dollars with Staples, and I know they're an outstanding company, so thank you for bringing it forward.
All right, is?
Madam Chair, I mean, I'd suggest if there's no, nothing comes up, we don't receive any comments or anything else, if this go on the consent agenda next month as well.
Need a second?
All right.
Thank you.
We will do that. That's right. All right, we will go on to staff reports. Dr. Benson, regarding the resource utilization study.
If you, I don't think I split. So we've included in the agenda item for the board to review the status of the recommendations that was included in the study that was completed on March 24, 2015. So we wanted to make sure the board is aware of the number of recommendations that we've addressed or are in progress. Some of them are going to take more than one year for us to get at, and then there are others that, based upon further analysis, we don't believe we should be pursuing at this point. So we've used a coding structure on the report here to talk about the ones that are identifying as in progress, or they're completed, or they're planned to be executed in, or reviewed in fiscal year 17 or fiscal year 18. If the board feels like there are some items that should be elevated in terms of attention, we certainly would like to know that because we could reprioritize as presented. But we wanted to make sure that, you know, there were approximately, just short of 100 recommendations that came into the study. And so within the span of about a year and a half, we've taken on a fair number of them, certainly more than a third are in progress or planned moving forward. So that's it. That was a significant investment that the board made to do that, the resource utilization study, and I want the board to be aware that staff is taking the recommendations seriously, and we will continue to review and bring recommendations to the board based upon the recommendations that are included in the study.
I would just invite the board, look over this document when we meet for our quarterly if there are some that we feel that the timeline is, should be shifted, or we have some, we will be talking about superintendent goals, budget goals. It seems like this document may be part of that discussion, that's why I thought it was just important to get it before the board tonight, not much further discussion, but I just wanted to let you all know the reasoning behind that because I think our quarterly work session will set out the work for the year, and many of these documents regarding progress on what we're doing need to all be tracking together.
I think, Madam Chair, if I could, this is kind of an important thing that our communications director should be on the radar as well to report out because, as Dr. Benson said, this was a significant investment, $100,000 or so, that the taxpayers paid to hopefully make us a better organization, more efficient organization. And so often with these types of reports, they're very easy to criticize by the public, and typically rightfully so because you pay for these reports and then they get put on the shelf. I think it's very important that we have this reporting tool now to tell us what our progress is and how we're doing on each and every recommendation that was made in there.
Here you go.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Hirin. Sorry, we're trying to make sure we have the motion correct to go into closed session, so I'm excited. Sharie, we've given you plenty of things to go on, so I will now turn this over to Ms. Egan for a motion, please.
All right, bear with me here, I have an amendment.